The workshop for the Finance Committee. I'm going to turn it over to Courtney and Dr. Pasquarella. The only thing I've been asked by Courtney for this particular session is that the questions be held until after the presentation. She found a little bit more disconnecting and just sort of disorienting at the last meeting. Right after we conclude the workshop, we're then going to go right into the Finance Committee meeting to do what we have to do for that. So with that being said, we'll start and I'll turn it over to Courtney.
Okay, thanks, Rich. Okay, I was just going to text Dr. Sal, but I'm going to get myself up and share my screen. Okay. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I'm getting a little feedback, but I think it should be okay. Okay, so I'll get started and Sal will jump in.
I'm right here, Courtney.
Okay, okay.
We had problems getting on with, I don't know, with some technology. If I drop off, I apologize.
Oh, I'm glad you're here, okay.
Is Gladys, are we ready to go?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
We already started, Dr. Sal.
All right, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I've had problems getting on this.
No, we've been having, often we knew the school was having problems today, too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we've done some modifications to the budgets, which since we talked last week, we've put some narratives in to help out. We thought tonight the best way to do it is sort of the way we did it last year. Courtney will go through and talk about the dollars and cents and some of the avenues, and then we'll get to the end and, you know, follow up with questions and so forth at that time. For the board's perspective, and I know you know, you know, it takes so much just to move the budget over from this year moving forward, and that's five and a half percent thereabouts. And the remainder of the money, the other, just under 10% total percentage increase, is there to do some of the improvements that we need. And I keep getting asked, well, what if you don't get the money? Well, you know what happened last year and the years past. I think one of the things that this board has helped and my staff has done is that we found grants and other ways of moving money around. But the bottom line is this, the money that you see in this budget, our goal is to bring students to grade level or no more than two grade levels beneath the teaching level that students are placed. That permits the teachers to do small groups effectively. And when we don't have those kinds of resources, then instead of being two grade levels below, those of you that have no teachers and have friends, they're three and four grade levels below, maybe more, because there's gaps, given, we've been out since last March, so I worry about it. So the money in this budget to get to 10% beyond the five and a half thereabouts is to give us an opportunity to provide the kind of curriculum enrichment and support so the youngsters can access the standards at the grade level and the materials effectively. And that's what we're going to attempt to do. Yes, there's money available from the feds, but that can't be supplemented. This money here that's coming from the EESO2 is very specifically to be used for mitigating any of the coronavirus challenges that we've had. So we'll be able to do some braiding, there's no question, but what you're going to see tonight is sort of what you saw the other night in terms of what we believe we need. So I won't talk anymore. I know there's a meeting after this with the Finance Meeting, the group that can delve into it some more, but I think Courtney has done a great job of organizing it in a way that is easier to follow up. Courtney, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sal. So I just first wanted to thank the board for taking the time. I know it's a series of meetings and I really appreciate that. And I wanted to thank Rich and Al and Kate and Rachel who gave me feedback throughout the process. And it was so helpful for me to hear from you all to be able to help develop what Cabinet had already developed so that we could come in and talk to you about it. And I want to thank Cabinet for the patience with me as we put it together, their vision and their prairies. I'm really excited to present it to you tonight. So the first slide is something that I combined from a few slides that Erica had that I think tells a really nice story, and you'll notice it's dated, but I kept everything consistent with one-year data so that we could see a consistent story. And this is really just showing you this nice visual about, not nice for us, but how the Connecticut population, you know, in general, the blue bars has declined. It's gone down over these, this 10 years that I'm showing you here, or eight years, so whatever. And Danbury's, the red line, were going up in a complete inverse. So it tells that story that Erica started to build for us or has been building for us about the ECS funding. Those many years ago, when they established that metric, it was to get us those dollars that we should have had on that day, over 10 years later though. And they do adjust every year, so a few people have asked about this. They do adjust every year to make an adjustment for enrollment, poverty, SED and L. There's a formula and Erica goes over it, and it's a little complicated, hard for me to understand, but the point being, it is still yesterday's dollars and we are still growing. And that was because Connecticut, you know, they really couldn't just take all the funding back right away from those disparities and still leave what was needed in those schools. And there was the funding challenge that Connecticut had at the time. So that partially explains why we had the ECS base and every year we get an alliance increment. But it's as a result of this story, which is what's driving some of our requests here because as we know, our population is going up, has gone up and is going up. And so further, and this is, you know, again, the story we all know, but it's a nice visual to show that when you look at similar districts and neighboring districts, Danbury has quite a lot, a lot higher percentage of low-income families, a much, much bigger share of English learners, and a similar share of special education students. And the same thing now, look at down here where I'm highlighting for our neighboring districts, it's just, you know, stark, very large, very big contrast between our percent low-income and our direct neighbors and our percent English learners. And why we point that out is obviously, you know, it costs more money to educate children that are living in poverty, as evidenced by a lot of research, and English learners and special education students. And so we're going to reiterate that nearly 60% of our kids are classified as low-income, one in four English learners, and we approach one in eight in need of special needs services. And that means that not only is our population growing, but increasingly it's more expensive to appropriately educate our population of kids. And this was, I liked this slide because I think it also shows, you know, something that's changed over a decade that we really have to be cognizant of. We've more than doubled the percent of students with brain reduced lunch over the last 10 years. Again, that exacerbates the needs. We're not the same school district we were 10 years ago. And this slide is really highlighting our higher percentage of ELL students, which we're going to get into with our needs, as you'll see and you got introduced to when Agusta presented, and I believe Agusta's here with us tonight as well, the needs for the English learners. And he describes it as, we're on a path to success, you know, we're, are we there? No, we're on a path to there. So there's been some investments, you know, that we've done that he's asking for, but there's more that's needed and we'll talk to that. But this is showing that compare, this is going lower dollar per pupil to higher dollar per pupil for these comparable areas. So Danbury, East Hartford, Meriden, Waterbury, with a similar makeup, but we're more than, you know, almost more than, almost double just Meriden and Norwalk's population. So, and this was, this is dated, so this is 17, 19 numbers, so, you know, we've increased even since then, just to make the point that we have a very diverse community, as we all know, and that takes resources. And then this is showing a graph for the special education population. Again, this was...
Courtney?
Yes?
I don't think your slides are advancing.
Right, they're not.
Oh, they're not?
No.
Thank you. Okay, well, that would be, that's, that's, I'm sorry. Okay, let me go back. Can you see the one about Special Ed here?
We're on the...
That's where we left off, right there. That's the last...
Okay, I'm so sorry. Okay, now you can see this one?
Yeah.
The blue car, okay, thank you, Kara. So, so good that, good that you told me because now you could just see visually what I've just described. It's almost double and it's pretty, you know, significant when you see it visually with the bars representing where we've changed with low-income students in the district. And then this was the slide I was talking about with our high percentage of ELL learners. So it's going from lower dollar per pupil spend to higher dollar per pupil spend, and you know, Danbury's all the way over here, but the percentages are representing percent of L students. So even though we're almost double Meriden and Norwalk, which are the highest next population, you know, our investment per pupil is lower. And then this is a special education slide to show that, you know, when you cross with enrollment and the investment over time, we haven't necessarily kept pace with the enrollment increase, although we are meeting our MOE. Kelly works every, you know, submits the IDA application and we're meeting our MOE, which requires that we are constantly increasing the investment in special ed, but this shows that we haven't really kept pace with the increased need as demonstrated by our enrollment change. And then again, showing just a breakout of total funding per pupil, per pupil compared to Norwalk and Stanford with a breakout of town and state contribution. And we know these stories, I just like the visual. This one was from Erica's slides with showing the state share. We just showed it a little bit differently so you can see, you know, that although Danbury's lower, the state share is quite low relative to some of our other neighboring districts or Connecticut partner districts. So now I'm just, I'm getting into the budget. So what does all that mean for our budget? You know, Rich pointed out, and I did add to this slide, which I thought it was an interesting point, to look at going back all of these years, you know, we've consistently requested a certain amount of funding. And this last year it was 10.53%, and this year it's about 9.82, just under 10% for a budget request of 149 million. But if you added up the difference between the board-approved budget and the city-approved budget going back over these years, it amounts to about $48 million that we didn't receive year over year from our request. And that's just the difference between the board-approved and the city-approved announced.
Courtney, may I ask a question? It's Joe.
Joe, I think Gladys is trying to jump in here. Rich made a request at the start of the meeting that we hold our questions.
Okay, I'll hold it till the end.
Yeah, I normally do that type of dialogue. I just got the feedback that my last presentation was a little disjointed, and so I apologize.
No problem.
Yeah, okay, but please remember it so we can, we can...
Don't worry.
But yeah, this is just our standard chart of what we asked for and then, and then what the board approved and then what we ultimately received. And the total amount is just the difference over time of the city-approved and the board, the board-approved and the city-approved. And this is our total ask. It's a little different than what I sent from the detailed spreadsheets that I sent on Friday because we had some modifications. And after this meeting tonight, I'll send out the update for the detail as well. So our prior year funding was 135,686,000. And this is a breakout, just a high level of our budget request. And we've done it similarly to how, you know, I worked with Rich and he thought, to be clear, you know, what we did is we broke up the maintenance budget and then by type, our different investment requests, I'm calling them, but our different needs and asks for what we're requesting. And each of these has a slide with the total dollar amount and the information behind it. So for example, our maintenance budget is about 7 million, and Dr. Sal mentioned that's about 5%. And I mentioned before, normally in a maintenance budget, you'd see 3% or under 3 if you're able to reprioritize some items. We did do some reprioritizing within our maintenance budget because we've been able to get some savings on fuel and some other partnerships that we have with the city. But even after that reprioritizing, it's about a 5% increase just on our maintenance budget due to the braided nature of the funding request from last year, just the cost of collective bargaining and the contractual agreements, as well as busing services and all those pieces. And I'll show you the detail. We have a request for 945,000 for graduation requirements and kindergarten and elementary enrollment. We have a $1.2 million request for student social emotional intervention. And it's, it's one of our bigger requests here, and you'll remember parts of it from our previous many, I guess, a couple iterations, a couple times it's come up. It's a restored request. And then, special education related services, 425K. Curricular programming and support, 1.8 million. English learner programming, a million. And learning loss mitigation for summer school, 250,000. And then some district operations. The bulk of this is a technology agreement that's expired and I'll explain that, but it's 575K. So those all get to our 9.8%, 9.82% ask, our total funding ask of 3.13.3. And you'll recognize we went in over this like $6 million number in detail the other day. It was 6.4. We had a few meetings and we modified the request and so now it's 6.1. So Rich also asked if I just break, break out for us just to see it in a simpler way, the carry-forward budget, you know, what's a restoration and what is a mandate? So this is the 13.3 just broken out along those lines. And here are our budget priorities with a nice picture of a student. So we're investing in teachers. We're funding state-required curriculum updates and supports. We're grossly behind in that. We're funding student support, student technology to accommodate the much needed expanded need that, you know, Kara's team has put in place this year during, you know, remote learning and distance learning. We're enhancing students' social emotional interventions. And we'll, we'll talk a little more about that because people had some questions about, well, what does that really mean? And we're keeping our obligations to mandated contractual increases for services and meeting and maintaining required levels of services for English learners, SED and SED students. But not just meeting and maintaining, like we're, like I think to reiterate what Agusta said, we're on a path, you know, and Kara really wanted to highlight as part of this budget, you know, this isn't just this year's budget. We're building the Portugal graduate, we're building the future academies, we're putting forward a budget that helps us get into place where we can be successful, you know, not just next year, but, but in the upcoming years. So the first category was the 945K, invest in teachers. So just specifically, it's three elementary teachers for our general regular teachers, and it's projected makeup growth for kindergarten, that's two of them, and then one is for regular general enrollment increase. So what does that mean? That means there was, there was a group of about 140 elementary kids that we would have expected to show up this year that didn't, probably because of the pandemic, maybe their parents kept them in pre-K. And we think there'll be a bump up in kindergarten. And the challenge there is that they might not just all show up in perfect blocks of 20 at their school. So that, we have to plan for that, you know, not knowing where they'll, they'll be exactly. And we prioritize that with the registration group so that we can, we can get a better sense of that earlier on. High school is a business, health, social studies, and half a music teacher, let's bring the music teacher up to full-time. And then for kindergarten and special edu, kindergarten teachers and high school teachers for special education. And then, you know, to describe the need, this is again, investing in teachers. So the basic elementary ask is just to meet class size requirements in our contract and what the board aspires to have us achieve in elementary schools. For Danbury High School, we all know that the graduation requirements have changed and getting the class of 2023 up to speed, so now we're on the sophomore class, requires adding teachers. So the add of the three and a half, three and a half FTE does do that. It gets us this next year's cohort closer to meeting those graduation requirements, which changed from 25, 21 to 25. And there's a benchmark for how many students, you know, need that assistance, and that's why we needed to add the additional teachers to meet that. Special education, there's growing enrollment in the pre-K class and expected to roll up to kindergarten. And as well as the new court decision increasing the age through 22 is anticipated to have an additional, I think, 100 students. I'm going to have Kelly clarify that at the end when we go through, but there is a number that she's projecting associated with that that ties into that need. So again, it's staffing to meet class-sized graduation requirements and mandated age increase for special education services. The next category is student social emotional intervention and support. And, and what is this? So it's a big investment in social emotional intervention to be able to more appropriately deal with emotional needs of our kids, which increasingly over time, then more challenging and also particularly during COVID. And so this has been a need that's been put up in the past. There's, there's three assistant principals for the elementaries, supported in the other elementary schools, so that's at Shelter Rock, Stadley and Ellsworth. And there is a threshold, I don't have my notes here, of I think 350 or more that determine the assistant principal being located at those schools. And the remaining schools would have a student behavioral specialist, which is a per diem staff member to do restorative work with the students. There's also a request for a psychologist or a social worker at Pembroke and left principal, the student, and three student behavior specialists, one at each middle school, an additional school counselor. And that school counselor in our multi-year budget grows to be one for each year so that by the end of three years, each middle school will have an additional counselor and a high school dean to address behavior and emotional needs, and two additional student behavior specialists, a parent liaison, and two school counselors. And again, that's a three-year goal, so two, two and two to get to six school counselors by the year 2023. And so why do we need, why do we need this investment in student supports and social emotional help? Number one, to respond to the ask requirements for appropriate student engagement and discipline practices. Number two, to improve the overall student outcomes by assisting students to make positive choices. And third, to reinforce the positive school behavior and contribute to overall social emotional well-being and goals of the school and provide support using restorative practices and enable the leadership staff within the school to better utilize their time as instructional leaders. So that, what does that mean? Kevin described it really well. If there's a child with a behavior issue and it's not escalated to the point where it requires a heavier, more intensive intervention with a social worker or another staff member is a behavior problem, a lot of times the principal at the school or an administrator gets involved and it takes away from their day leading the building and leading instruction for it could be up to half a day to, you know, be engaged in a problem. This will enable, not just support of the administrative staff, but also enable support for students that, you know, need a little bit of a guide. They need to be back in the class appropriately and maybe they're hoping to identify additional reasons because restorative practices are looking at additional reasons why the behavior's occurring. And so helping as part of a team support to get the kid back in the class so they, they're not being disruptive. So it's, it's spread out throughout, it's a, it's a consistent policy spread out throughout the whole district at every, every grade level. The, the next request is for 424,000 and $157, and it's for one speech pathologist, one OT or PT, an assistant director for Special Ed and related services, two nurses and a preschool secretary at Granville. The preschool secretary, we didn't hire this year at Granville, but it's needed, so we put it in the budget for the upcoming year. The two nurses, I don't, I don't know that we have to say why we need the nurses, but I will, because, you know, Kathy is phenomenal and we could clone her and make five more people, but we can't, so we, she desperately needs additional support. One would be at DHS and that was there in the past, I believe. So, you know, obviously the population of kids, we need an additional nurse there. And then the other one would be support for mandated non-public schools. We don't have enough nurses in the non-public schools. And overall support for Kathy, so where she needs backup staff or coverage or other things throughout the district. So desperate need. Special, the assistant director for Special Ed. This is, you know, Kelly managing a very, very, very large system, many supervisors, and this has been a need that's been put forward in the past as well. And it's a school-based position. And then the OT, PT and speech language pathologist, you know, we've, Kelly's been increasing these to meet the growing demands, as well as the growing enrollment, as we mentioned before. And this is just adding to that effort. And so it's a multi-year approach because you can't just add everybody at once, so she's doing it over multi-years. Again, this aligns with NEAS requirements and service levels that are needed to provide mandated support. And, and English, okay, so whoops, I'm going to move this out of the way. English, a second language, ESL and EL, English learners, it's a $915,000 investment. You know, I think the slides earlier speak for themselves about our population and the budget has spoken for, you know, our, our lack of ability to invest appropriately. And so this, two PSYOP coaches are just restoring two that we had before because right now they're sharing one PSYOP coach amongst three middle schools. The certified student assessor is needed to appropriately place, assess and place kids in the appropriate school setting or with the appropriate services. And then this big 300K is parity between our programs at Rogers Park and Broadview. So it's saying that now the kids would be able, with this investment of three teachers and 3.2 paras, the kids would be able to go to their homeschool rather than just going to, at Rogers Park. And so, yeah, that's putting forward that investment again. And in addition, talking about the population and the need for a certain student-to-teacher ratio, to keep pace, again, moving in the right direction, five bilingual Spanish and Portuguese teachers at Westside Morris, AAS, King Street Primary, and their shared teacher at South Street and King Street Intermediate, as well as new curricula and an expansion to the EL achieve program that Kara and Agusta have invested about $250,000 in. And again, I'm not going to do justice to it because they've done some amazing things, so we'll get to that. And so addressing increased enrollment, continuing efforts to provide meaningful content matter instruction and providing appropriate bilingual education. Not only is it the right thing to do, but it's the Connecticut mandate that ELL students receive up to 30 months of bilingual education if they're in a school with at least 20 students who speak the same non-English native language and need assistance learning English. So again, Connecticut bilingual law, initial identification requirements. We're required to offer bilingual education programs. We must follow the required home language survey guidelines for initial identification and placement, and also for kids to be at their homeschool. So, you know, the, be able to not travel far away from their homeschool, they can go to Rogers Park or Broadview depending on where they live. This, as Agusta said, and it will say again, moving in the right direction, the theory of action. We're getting to 1 to 65. Other comparable districts of our size target much lower ratios of 1 to 50, you know, but this is moving us towards the right direction. In addition, it's supporting, the new need is supporting the implementation of new English language ELD curriculum. That's the EL achieve, and it's the blueprint for serving ELL students throughout the day. And it's systematic ELD instruction, a dedicated time that provides explicit language instruction organized by level of proficiency, so appropriate for the student. And language instruction for content learning. So this is explicit instruction to support EL English learners in understanding and using language necessary for their grade level work. Really important, like Agusta has explained before that, you know, levels of proficiency matter when you assess, and then the appropriate learning for the levels and the big investment in EL achieve. And then the appropriate learning for the levels and the big investment in EL achieve, uh from what I hear has been um good and and Carol will talk more about that. Curricular and programming support, so this is nineteen point two staff and one point eight million dollars. And it's to ensure equity, align curricular programming and support across the district. Um we've seen good success with um, you know, wh- what Karasim has been able to do with the funding we were able to get during the pandemic. And our curricular budget has been very, very low and um hasn't really supported the curricular needs of students. So this gets us closer to there. One, the first thing you'll see here is technology and student classroom support. This is getting us um not buying fourteen full-time, it's converting um fourteen part-time staff into full-time staff and adding a full-time staff at the high school to support all of the technology needs for teachers and students um and buildings. Um the K twelve, fine and applied arts, health and special area, um individual is a crucial need that is lacking. We don't have anybody that organizes throughout the district for fine and applied arts. And the cabinet identified that as a big priority. And the student interventionist is building on the um investment that was made this year and seeing great success with intervention with students, they're part-timers. Um and this doubles the amount that we would, we're doing an intervention from thirteen to ten. And that, again, they're part-timers. And adding a hu- uh humanities literacy coach to guide work at the middle school level. Um and then we also are requesting support for summer school um training and it's a blank on the end, but this is basically adding um hours to some of our administrators in the summer because we need them to work on getting things up to speed for the upcoming year and also for summer school. And then there's some non-personnel curricular development, training, curricular resources, and then hardware and software that we just don't have in the budget, that we should have in the budget. So the training is um ELA, STEM, SRBI, techs, kits and supports. Um actually have another slide that has a little bit more information, but this, about five hundred thousand of this is a library. You saw that before. Um you go around our schools and you see that, you know, we don't, we don't have the library materials that kids need. So this puts forth an effort to start to build the libraries up. So a little bit more detail, the tech and student class support. Um Niasq noted that the industry standard for IT maintenance is one tech for every three hundred fifty devices. And we have a lot of devices now. And if we get the resources we need here, we'd have one tech for seven fifty. So again, not there, but moving in the right direction. It seems daunting to me, but Gina's able to handle it. And we also added approximately ten new digital platforms, so it requires setup, training, maintenance, um help desk in IT and data, you know, we can, you can all imagine. And have all been uh recipient of Gina's great support too, so. Curricular development, this is just a little bit of detail um for the curricular area, ESL, Algebra, World Language, all the things that we need to be doing for Niasq and graduation requirements and just for basic advancement. Um training, in intel training, that's, that was a big one in mathematics, illustrative math, K through twelve, and then for the academy, college career prep. And then basic resources, you know, there's a list here you can refer back to. Um we have, Cara invested in decodable text this year, this is expanding that um basic supplies that we need. Um and then I went over the staffing earlier, the curriculum administrator, the thirteen one hundred day interventionist, and then the middle school literacy coach. We're almost there. I know this is long. And then this is a big ask for technology operations. Bus, we're adding the bus, not just for enrollment growth, but because we really need a bus, like even without enrollment growth, because our kids are crowded, they're sitting three to a seat, you know, when we go back full-time, we're still gonna have germs. So you know, we we put in money for a bus. Admin offices, this is for the Osborne reconstruction, so um Kelly and Anne Need were able to get a deal with Sacred Heart to allow us to have the registration group and Anne needs, a few of Anne needs staff over at Sacred Heart. So that's been really nice, because it's a great central location for them. And it's also pretty affordable. We have a good relationship with um Sacred Heart, so we're really happy about that. And um we were able to rent a space right up the road from Beaverbrook for um uh all of our st- storage needs and also for Rich Gilbert's team, and that's for a year until the um El- Ellsworth Annex is complete. Furniture supplies, that's just uh, you know, we should be doing that regularly. It's not in the budget. We should be doing some refreshing to furniture and supplies, and we also have some enrollment and some staffing growth. So this would support the students um that we're projecting there. And then uh network maintenance, so this is um, you know, our current network components are in at Beaverbrook and at the high school. And the appliances have been in place for eight years. I can attest to the fact that they crashed and Gina has to get called all the hours and they restore them and it's bad and it normally it's a five-year lifecycle. These are on their eighth year. And the maintenance is expired in the contract, so we have to replace the appliances. It's not in the budget, so we're putting forward three hundred and forty-five K um to get the network support um as well as the materials in place. So moving the servers and all the components. So that's the budget. It kind of transitions awkwardly here, but to next steps. So um you know, I, we went through the different budget components. There's the maintenance budget, which, you know, you just see this big number of seven million, but I can give you more information on it. And you see the components of the new needs. Um and as we think about what we do with the budget, um I just wanted to remind us that we are still lobbying the state for the acceleration of the alliance funding. Meaning, we're just asking them to move it up a year so that we would double the amount we would get next year. Now, we have that ten million dollar commitment from the federal government, so you know, we'll, we'll discuss what that means for that as we roll out the budget um in the upcoming months. Um but we also are reviewing the priorities for the use of what we call, it's called the Coronavirus Supplemental Relief Act funding. It's too many words. It's just S R two or CARES two. So it's a second part to the CARES money that we already had, which was about two point six. We've gotten another ten point one. And it's a, it's allocated to us on the title one, you know, rules. So we have that money. We just have, we have to apply for it. There's eligible categories. And Cara set up a meeting with the administrators to start to um generate ideas for how we would utilize that, those funds and has a fallout meeting with them tomorrow. This application um starts to open up on February twenty-second, so there's kind of a fast timeframe for it, and it's a lot of funding. Um and then we'll also be planning for the upcoming alliance increment. So as we talked about, every year we're getting roughly, you know, we expect maybe two point eight million more this year. Some of that's already spoken for, for things that we did with CARES one, that we're now gonna talk about how to brave for next year, which is a little bit, you know, we have to be mindful of the fact that, as Sal had me put in red here, the funding cannot supplant operations. So not only is it dangerous to do that, because we build a risk into the future, but you know, the state literally said, and the federal guideline say, you can't supplant. So and then we have to build community support. So this is just a, a visual for what we provide to the um legislative agenda. Um this is just accelerating the alliance funding, so we're just showing you that we're saying, okay, just give us two million dollars ahead, you know, just move it up so that we get it faster. And that's kind of tha- that visual for that. And this is just giving you the timeline for the CARES funding. Um and um so they released it very recently, and I mentioned that twenty-second date. That's when it opens up. It'll be open up for about a month, but we wanna get our application in soon, so we can start working. And then um we have a year to spend the S R one funds and another year to spend the S R two funds, so till twenty twenty-three. And then if you, for your interest, like the detail in the maintenance, um uh con- um request, the seven million I mentioned is here with some notes explaining it, if you wanna refer to it. And then this is just the summary of the program improvements. And then a summary of the staffing requests that we have put forward, so. And with that, that is the presentation.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
Latice, so I'll open it up to you for questions or to the board.
This is Janelli's chair.
Okay, Mr. Janelli.
Anybody who wants to, um I would suggest that anybody who wants to request a uh a question, identify themselves and and direct it to any of the cabinet or Courtney, we can just proceed that way.
Rich, I have a couple of questions when it's appropriate.
Sure, go ahead, Joe. You had the first one.
Courtney, um just a couple real quick questions, um. The first one. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I see, I it seemed like I froze up on my end. Going back to, you had a slide on the school budget history. And last year's budget, it appear, I just wanna, and I, and I think I know the answer. I wanna ma- just make sure I'm right when, because people are gonna ask. We wound up meeting our number last year, so we asked for X. We wound up ge- eh eh X additional funding. We wound up getting X, but it wasn't the same X, correct?
Yes, correct. I mean, yeah, yeah, we asked for nine point five percent and we got something like two and change.
Yeah.
Right. And the rest, i- i- in raw dollars, we asked for ten million more. We wound up getting close to that ten million, but it wasn't the same ten. Cause it was the breed, it was the, the, the surplus and the CARES Act and all of that, right?
Yeah, yeah, just only because of the pandemic, really. We were allowed to roll over alliance money that was unspent because of the closure. We didn't spend as much of it. Um they don't normally, normally you can only roll afford like a set, cut percent. And then we had CARES, yep. And then we had um some additional funding, like they were from our operating budget that the city council allowed us to put in reserve.
Okay. And then my only other question, and this kind of goes to, you were talking about replacing some technology and some different varying things. I, it, this arose and somebody asked me the question, like in the fall, when we were talking about replacing laptops for the high school teachers. I've heard from multiple elementary school teachers in very, in multiple different schools, that they're using laptops that were current when George W. Bush was president. Um that are ten, fifteen years old or more, and they're not functioning very well on distance learning. Is there any sense that we're replacing those or doing anything? Is that anywhere in this budget?
Yeah, we didn't put out the multi-year budget and we probably should have, but Gina did prepare for a refresh and replacement for the student and teacher technology. You know, and and there is a component of that as we build out the CARES budget too, you know, because we wanna look for things that are not gonna cause holes in our budget, not that, you know, your refresh should be an ongoing refresh, but yeah, so she did put that in, not for this year, because this year we considered that she had her technology needs met. Um understanding that, I know, I'm hearing that there are some antiquated computers out there, but I think she did move down. Correct me if I'm wrong, everybody, uh some of the resources that she got all those brand-new computers to the high school and then some were not so old from.
She reallocated, you know, um reallocated s- some of the um those that we had at the high school that were newer and and not the antiques that we were having at the elementary. Uh but uh but you're right, Courtney. Gina's not here right now, but she was looking at some kind of a cycle replacement.
Yeah, she put forward a plan for a maintenance, a cycle um to write address like for multi-year um needs and the life cycle of the computers and how many she would need for student and teachers. It's just not in this year's budget, because she thought she had enough to meet this year, this upcoming year.
Joe, when you're through?
Yeah.
Joe, are you done?
Yes, I am. Go ahead, Al. Thank you. Sorry about that. I kinda froze up at the end.
Courtney, is this the same budget that we had last week? Uh this, just one item that I caught in the curriculum, like last week we had a million six and now we're at a million eight, so.
Yeah, okay, it's just that we re- I recap, I I recategorize some of the things so that you'll notice the total dollar amount didn't go down, but when I sent you the budget last week, like for example, I think the instructional coach might not have been in there, but it really belongs there. I think we had that under um humanities and arts. And we combined the categories.
And and second, uh what was a climate specialist last week, is a behavior, student behavior specialist. Do we have an exact job spec for this, this job yet?
Yeah, we, we, and we thought the climate was, the people were thinking we were talking about maintenance. So we, you know, we've had these folks before, we've had them in the budget. We're trying to be more explicit. These are, these are individuals that are, that um that are part-timers, as it's saying. And there is a job description that they'll be working with lower tertiary kinds of department activities, as, as Courtney mentioned. Um more hands-on in order to get to um issues with kids earlier. Um and that would assist with the general department, therefore in making a more of a positive environment at the uh school. That's why we came up with the word climate, but it's, 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 it doesn't make sense to the general public.
Right, so we, we, there is a written job specification and I can go online and read it.
Yes, Kim, you're on, right, somewhere?
Kim will be joining a little bit later. She had something with her son.
Oh, okay, okay, yes.
But I do, she did mention there was, we just don't have anything posted right now, because there's not like a uh open position for it at the moment, but there what, that she does have an existing position.
Yeah, I, I'm curious. I'm gonna vote for this. I'd like to know what exactly what it is. If you could forward me your tentative job specification for that. I, I don't, I don't um disagree that it's, there's a need for an interim level of behavior. Uh you know, is, is that, and is that something like a, a safety advocate? You know, if you're more education.
No, no, I, no, I, I, I think, I think if we had all the resources in the world or even the resources in uh, not the whole world. These would be um folks that would be certificated and had some workings in the counseling area. But if you look at the amount there, you could see it's, it's not a lot of money. They're, they're part-timers. These are, just as, as we said, Albert, just hands-on folks, kind of. The principals do not have folks to help them with um moving through the halls, getting the students, bring them in, call, following up for them. So that's the kind of help that um we thought they needed. We looked at some districts, they had what they call working APs, which are working assistant principals. Um we looked at that and those are teachers who during their open time would be able to assist the school principals. Well, our elementary teachers don't have open time. You all know that they're working the whole day. And they try to have them take their prep period, it just didn't work. So these folks are hands-on after school, helping with the buses, helping with the recess issues, just um another pair of hands for uh relatively cheap money. And some of these folks are administrators that haven't gotten jobs, that are looking to get some experience. But we do have a job description we could share with, share with you.
Okay, now, and and there's also gonna be a dean of behavior?
No, the dean is much different. The dean is a certified, we've had deans in the past. They have, uh they're able actually to work with students, parents, to um issue department and or sanctions um and and really um look into um higher levels of incidences. Not your lower uh kinds of things that these folks would be. Our deans are, are, are disciplinarian type, that, I mean, in terms of what you might be used to. Um they're not at the level of an assistant principal. Your assistant principals are going to be running academies down the road, participating in those academies. They're doing teacher evaluation. Um and uh these folks helped out with um period uh issues that are happening in the hallway, uh kids that are cutting classes, following up with phone calls, all of that kind of stuff that takes an enormous amount of time away from the um the administrators that are working more as curriculum and instructional leaders in, in the, in the school. Um so that, those are, and we have job descriptions for that as well, Albert.
Thank you. And and just, I noticed the spec was uh twenty-six percent ESL. Are we down? I thought I saw a number last year of twenty-eight percent.
I think that varies, that the kids do leave and go into mainstream and fit and and change categories. That may well be, you may, when you may open up in September, that may be thirty-two percent.
I think my number was old. I think if last year was twenty-eight, my number was the year prior, so I think, I think that's the, what's happening. But yeah, because I, my number's a little bit dated, because I was aligning all the numbers to be the same year, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Before Al had asked this question, I was going to mention that part of the, the conversation I had with Courtney this year was to try to, to relate or to humanize to the layman, to the board and the public and the public what these figures really meant or what the impact was uh in everyday life in the school and the reason for it, if we didn't get it. And and to, to that point and some of Al's questions, I just wonder whether the good if the, such as like, Mr. Walton can state. if the, such as like Mr. Walton can speak to, to the, the socially emotional part. I know Courtney did it, but she doesn't have a financial point of view. If you get those that are in the trenches, such as, as Kevin or Kelly for the special ed. Um, I, I think they could be more descriptive, more detailed, which will help further questions such as the ones, uh, Al had asked and, and perhaps clarify things to the board a little bit further. Uh, if, if that's okay, if, as an example, if Kevin feels more information is necessary on the social emotional part, perhaps he could ask Courtney to bring up that slide and speak to it. And again, have Kelly speak to the, uh, special education, uh, slide. Um, I, I think the impact that it has from these people in the trenches is a lot different than, you know, coming from the financial part as well as carried to the curriculum part.
Rich, I think you said partly what was on my mind, possibly the cabinet member that is head of ESL, Mr. Gusto should present ESL.
But God, didn't see him here. But Kevin, to start with, do you have any additional comments or to support the 1.2 million so that, you know, we get a good feel as to the, the need of it, the impact of this, and if we don't get it, you know, what happens?
Let me unmute myself here, Mr. Jim Genelli. So one, I, I'm gonna, I, I'm going to, uh, predict that we are going to, request is going to be honored. And I will, as part of your request, explain why I feel like it's important to start with, um, and just to add on to what Dr. Sal was talking about with the, with the behavior specialist position. And so, you know, I, I know we, um, alluded to some of these things prior. Um, but it's, it's very important. And I know we had talked about it before, particularly in our K5 schools uh, with the majority of our principals, uh, or the lone administrator in the building. Um, and so certainly, you know, they have support from, uh, from the special ed staff. Um, but, you know, when we have students that are having meltdowns, when we have students who are having um, challenges with behavior and social emotional, um, concerns, um, you know, these are, these are occurrences that can, you know, dominate a principal's entire day, which will later impact the principal's ability to support staff throughout the school day. Uh, impact the principal's ability to support other students throughout, throughout the school day. And many of us are projecting that a lot of our students are going to come back with, you know, even more social emotional concerns and demands uh, that they had previously. Um, and so we, we are seeing this position being critical to support the principal leadership, but also just to support the overall school climate in the building. You know, something we also alluded to in our last conversation, you know, we've talked about the investment this district has made in restorative practices. And this person can be trained, you know, using those same restorative-like practices to work with the children if harm has been done to another child or within that classroom or classroom community. You know, this person can help get that child back into the classroom, you know, after they've been, um, um, you know, had, had an opportunity to de-escalate, um, which, you know, whether this person comes in with those, comes in with those skills or we teach these, this person these skills, um, you know, the, these are things that we can, these are things that would be, um, uh, you know, very beneficial to a principal, uh, but most importantly to the entire school climate. Um, you know, we, we'll also see this position building relationships with all of the students in the building. It's not just the ones in crisis. So like Dr. Sal said, it could be, you know, this person could be available in the cafeteria, available for dismissal. Uh, we want this person to build relationships with students, staff, parents, uh, you know, the greater community, but whatever it takes to help improve the overall school climate, you know, this person can be a very, very valuable addition to the staff. Um, you know, they can overall assist students to just make positive choices, you know, throughout the school day. Uh, whether that's one-on-one, whether that's, you know, in the cafeteria, whether that's dismissal, whether that's on a playground. Um, obviously they're going to be collaborating with the school administrator to help reinforce positive behavior building wide. Um, and you know, we're going to continue to have social emotional goals, you know, throughout the school district. And I think this work is going to continue to evolve and this person can certainly play a role. Now, they're not going to be necessarily leading this effort, but they can play a valuable role supporting the principal to help implement, you know, implement these goals that are respected buildings. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm really hoping that the board and the community is going to appreciate this recommendation. Um, you know, and, and, you know, ideally we would have an additional assistant principal of all the elementary schools. Um, and I'll just transition to that one. Um, you know, we have uh, three elementary schools right now with over 450 students in them. Um, Ellsworth is well over 450 at 467 and close to 470 students in the building. And as we all know, on this call, we're building an additional annex, which means we'll have more students soon. Um, and so, uh, Doc, um, Marty Duncan has, you know, considerable ground to cover in that school. Um, and, and, and frankly, the numbers suggest 450 students is typically the standard for, to consider an assistant principal. Uh, we have three elementary schools, one at close to 470, the other two averaging 500. I believe, uh, Statley Rough is like 490 and, and Shelter Rock is a little bit over 500, like 505 or 506. And so, you know, with these numbers, uh, you know, these are, I think all three of these positions warrant, all three of these schools warrant an assistant principal. Um, I believe Kara spoke to it, um, articulated the fact that, you know, we need, we need support for classroom teachers and to help lead instruction. Um, and so, you know, as, as big as, as big as these numbers get, and we can think about this, this in a similar way, we think about class size in our classrooms. Uh, you know, we have guidelines where we would like no more than 22 in a classroom in K1, 2, and 3. Um, and, and frankly, if you get up, get up to 450 students in the building, your staff gets bigger. Obviously there's more needs, greater needs in your school-wide. Um, and so to have one principal to meet the needs of all of the students and staff in that building and parents is becoming to be a little unwieldy. And so, you know, that, that's why the request for three assistant principals at these three schools with more than 450, Shelter Rock and Statley, um, you know, almost 500 respectively at each building. Um, and then, uh, and, and so I, I just think it's important to reiterate those things in those requests. Um, you know, when, when speaking about, when speaking about the social emotional support and just the overall growth of those two areas. So I'll, if there's more you'd like for me to speak to, I'll be happy to, but certainly I just wanted to highlight those two areas to start with.
I have one question is, what's the, uh, the school counselor? The function of a counselor, when I think of a counselor is, is, is like a guidance counselor. How does that differ from the psychologist or the social worker in terms of the role or what they perform?
Yeah. So Kelly, best person to answer, but Mr. Genelli, if I can just open with this, Kelly, if I could just open with this. Because in the last meeting we had, you know, I had talked about, you know, my experience as an assistant principal decades ago, it feels like. Um, in Norwalk, but you know, we had two assistant principals in each, in each house office. So we had assistant principals in the building of 1600. Um, and I, and I just want to reiterate, we are understaffed in terms of counselors' ratio. Um, again, I believe the standard is 225 to 250. And I believe Kelly in our last meeting, um, shared with the board and the community that we're over 300 per counselor. And so as we talk about our goals around college and career-ready students, um, counselors play a critical role in this planning process. Um, you know, whether it's meetings with families, meeting with students, and when we, when, when our counselors are understaffed, we can't have the same expectations in one of the biggest high schools in the district, I mean, in, in the state of Connecticut and continue to operate, um, and Dan is leading a school that continues to be under manned. Um, and so I know that we were, um, noted by NIASK as, you know, this being an area of improvement for us. Um, and quite frankly, I think it's a critical need for us to help, to help to continue to meet the ongoing needs of our students and student population.
Thank you very much.
If I could just piggyback on that, um, it's important to remember in our district that our school counselors, that we have school counselors, uh, sixth, grade six through 12. Um, and as, uh, Mr. Wallston indicated, primarily their role is on college and career readiness. Um, you know, making sure that students understand their pathways, what they need to do to get on track, uh, teaming with parents, students, community agencies, um, you name it, to track grades, attendance, all of those interventions. Um, partner with classroom teachers. Um, at the secondary level, our school psychologists and social workers, a majority of their role is working with our students that are already identified as needing supports. Um, so our special education students are 504 students. That's not to say they don't work with other students. But again, due to the large caseloads that they each have, um, they tend to play a bigger part in those mandated services that are provided. Um, at the elementary level, we do not have school counselors currently. Um, so our school social workers and psychologists partner to meet any of the social emotional needs for both our general ed students as well as our, um, legally mandated services through special ed and 504. So it does vary a little bit on level. Um, of course, the overarching goal for all of those departments is to meet students' needs to partner with families. So they all build, um, up to that ultimate goal of having a student to be successful in school. But there are, um, definite, uh, differences based on our, um, numbers, um, based on our needs of the students. And it does vary a little bit based on the level that we're talking about.
At, at the high school, the current request of the two additional school counselors, I, I didn't hear, um, Kevin's request, how much would that bring our ratio up to in terms of the, the ratio of counselors to the students at the high school if we added the two, the two more this year?
So you would need to add two more each year over the next three to four years to get closer to the ratio of about 250. So it is a, it is a small, um, kind of drop in the bucket, but ultimately my fear is if we don't make, um, if we don't start moving in that direction, um, our numbers are going to continue to build and we're even going to be further and further behind the eight ball. Eight ball. So for those of you that have been on the board in the past, I'm going to relate it to what we have done with, um, our speech and language pathologist. For the last four school years, we have brought in, um, about two a year into the district because they had the same problem. Their caseloads were well in excess of the caseload that was recommended for, for them. And so doing, you know, the first year we brought in two made a small, um, you know, dent. And then the next year, a little bit bigger. And now we're at a point where while we do continue to grow and we still need, you know, we've requested one in this budget. Um, we are feeling the effects over the last handful of years where we've made a supportive model for these positions. So I would correlate it very, very similarly with what we've done in the speech and, with the speech and language pathologist, which has been very successful.
More of a leading question, Kelly, because I, I think it's very important that people understand the, the high ratio currently of counselor to, particularly in a high school, uh, the counselor to the, the, the student as to how basically incomprehensible it would be for that person physically to handle that many students. And, and therefore the student not getting the proper services that that's necessary. So, I mean, that's what I was trying to bring out. And I also assume that the behavioral specialists would eventually lead us to better academic outcomes. I suspect that would be it.
I think the important thing, Mr. Genelli, is that our school counselors, our administrative team, our other pupil services staff do a phenomenal job in meeting these needs. Um, but you are right, the individualized attention when they are tasked with a number of students in excess of what is recommended. Um, the ability for us to provide individualized interventions, particularly to our most needy students, um, becomes compromised. And so we want to provide the best for all students, um, and some students need more from these staff members. So that is why it's critical that we add these positions.
Thank you. Did, uh, Kelly, did you want to speak to the slide on special education to elaborate more on it?
Thank you. Um, so the first I'll speak through is the speech and language pathologist. As I had referenced, uh, just a few moments ago, um, we have done a nice job in adding positions. And while we do still continue to grow in this need, particularly with our youngest learners, our preschool, um, and this is no surprise to the board, um, continues to grow in numbers. And so we do have a need, um, for additional speech and language services at that level. Um, so we are requesting one additional position to support our early, uh, childhood center, um, with speech and language services. Um, in addition, our OT and PT services, again, at the preschool level, um, our young, our youngest learners typically require more of these related services as they have a multiple, multitude of needs coming in. Um, and so we have a need for additional OT and PT support. Um, what I can speak to with many of these services is providing intervention early to our pre-K kindergarten, um, early, you know, our early, um, learners and early students. Um, ultimately, our goal with some of them is to no longer need the service and to support them to mainstream more into the general ed curriculum, which we are able to do with success. Um, so the hope is, is adding this additional support for our youngest students will help to make, um, improved outcomes for them over time. Um, additionally, the assistant director is something that we have, um, brought before the board, um, on two previous occasions. Our department is, is very large. There's nearly 1,700 identified special education students. Um, and it's myself and the five supervisors, which are, um, spread across the different levels. Um, and so one of the areas that is in need of additional support, um, is certainly working with, um, families, um, creating additional programs within district to support, um, a variety of special education students. We also need to, um, have, uh, additional support for some of our related services, uh, staff members to go to, to provide professional development and, um, continuous learning for them. Um, and this position would, would assist with that. Um, the nursing position, I do feel the need to speak to it a little bit, but I think particularly in these times speaks to itself. Um, the high school is understaffed and that was noted in the, uh, NIASK report. Um, so that would be where one of the positions would go. Um, and as the board knows, we are, um, legally obligated to provide services, um, nursing services as well as special education services to our non-public students. Um, and so we do have a need in that area for some additional support. As well as, um, that, that additional nursing position could also be used. Um, frequently Kathy O'Dowd will become the nurse when we are down a nurse in a school. Um, and as the supervisor, um, she does have the need to, to be able to oversee, um, and support staff. And so that, that additional person, person split between the non-publics as well as an assistant to Kathy, um, would allow her to be able to put a certified nurse that knows our kids and students in the building. Um, in the event that we have a need somewhere, which comes up on a very regular basis. Um, and lastly, the preschool secretary, um, as you know, we've opened an additional site. Um, and there is not currently a building-based secretary there. Um, so this person is needed not only for the general operations of the building, um, but at the preschool level, there is a heavy emphasis on scheduling uh, PPT meetings, um, coordinating, you know, subs, interpreters and so forth. Um, there are extensive legal mandates that we are obligated, um, to have our secretary assist with as far as, uh, special education policy and procedure. Um, and this person would be trained, um, in, in assisting the supervisor there and doing so.
Thank you. Would, uh, Dr. Cass Merritt, I could talk to the 1.8 million on curriculum?
Would you prefer this slide, Kara? Is this better for you or would you prefer the one with the dollars?
The budget one, yeah, because there's some big.
No pressure, Kara.
Um, so just going line by line. So as you know, I think it's no secret, we add a tremendous amount of technology in the district as a result of our shift to remote learning. Um, in some ways, it's been, uh, a little bit of a silver lining in the way that we've been able to get a tremendous amount of, of laptops in the district for our students and we're continuing to work on increasing that and hopefully we'll maintain a, a cycle over time now that we've gotten everybody to one-to-one. So that's exciting. Um, but with all those machines, um, and Chromebooks, we now have a, a need for tremendous tech support. And so we've had to increase, um, our part-time to 14 full-time, our media techs to, with an increase of 4.2. And so, uh, these folks can do everything from, um, setup to troubleshooting to repairs. And, uh, particularly now that we're back in, in person, um, you know, they are very much needed to support teachers i- in the buildings. Um, and our tech department, um, is, is fairly still quite small but mighty, and these folks will help to support that. And it'll be very, very valuable as we continue to round out our technology supports for students and staff. Um, one area that was, um, noted in the ASK, um, actually, I'm not sure how, who on the board remembers this, but we did have a um, K12 curriculum administrator for fine and applied arts and at one point in time. And we did lose that in one of the budget cycles. We're trying to restore that in this budget cycle. Um, you know, over the years, we've had, um, you know, have not been able to keep up with curriculum development in this area. We now have new NIASK, uh, NIASK did make some mention of this, and we also have, um, some new graduation requirements that require increased health credits. Um, and so we need curricular revisions there and there's just, there's a lot of classes and courses in areas that fall under uh, this umbrella. We've got media, art, music, PE, health, science. So you can imagine the span of that K12. Um, and so we, we are desperate for some additional leadership to concentrate in those areas so that we can um, really start to produce high-quality curricula, particularly as we go forward with, um, aca- academy development and rounding these things out. We'll need someone who's an expert with, to help with integration, um, and to support. and to support teaching and learning in these very critical areas. Last year, you remember, one of the big asks in the budget was the student support specialist, which are certified staff members. This is a huge component to us delivering in a systemic way, intervention services for SRBI and to support student learning at different tiers of need. And so we, with that, those student support specialists joined some interventionists that we already had in place from previous budget cycles. And so we were able to create somewhat of a, a nice little team in each building to start to service students in a more systemic and equitable fashion. But as I mentioned last year, that was really the beginning of rounding out the services. And so this would be sort of a 2.0 layer to continue in this area. It was critical last year that we got those student support specialists in at, at a time just as this pandemic hit because they were able to quickly jump in and run small group instruction. They have continued to run small group instruction in this environment, meeting with students and checking in to make sure that we are continuing our, our support services. The student interventionists, if I can add a student support specialist in every single building, a second one I would, but we know we're trying to be reasonable. Having a student interventionist, which is a 10-month part-time employee, you could almost equate the student interventionist at this level to the climate position that we spoke about earlier, right? So it's not a certified staff member per se, but somebody that we can train to do very specific things that, that fills a, a need in the buildings. And so the 13 would supply us with enough for additional coverage at the elementary level and expand on our intervention support structures that we're really trying to build. And will be critical as we move forward. You'll see that there's some other asks in the budget related to intervention. It, so that we can help to mitigate some of the learning loss that may be occurring right now. The humanities literacy coach, we have had this position before in our budget. This is while it's new for this budget. This is just us trying to get this back into place. Again, critical to support intervention, to help coach teachers on, on implementing targeted small group instruction in the classroom and to help coordinate that effort across the three buildings. This is a very much needed position. The support for summer school and training, again, we anticipate many different programs running to, whether it be boot camp, summer school, additional intervention experiences this summer for our students to try to extend their learning. And with that, as you know, many of our administrators are not year-round administrators. We have, they, they stop off at different points in the year, 10-month, 11-month, 12-month. And so we anticipate needing to extend some of their work into the summer school. And so that is an approximate amount that would be needed to do that. Curricular development, we are continuing to work on curriculum. There's a little bit of a pause this year in the pandemic with certain areas, but we need to pick back up on that again. Some of those areas include English Language Arts, STEM, of course. As you know, we're continuing to roll up our STEM curriculum for elementary, so in grades four and five. And we have some graduation requirements that were mentioned earlier that will need refinement in curriculum. There's about $190,000 worth of training. Again, this is related to many of the programs that we're implementing. There's some text and kits that belong in there as well. The curricular resources, this is a, you know, a large number, a, a good portion of that, if you remember, we had, that has been in the budget are around the library materials. Our libraries at the K-5 level are sorely lacking in many buildings. You know, we've had Title I schools for a long time and non-Title I, we've recently have made all Title I, but many of those years of being a Title I school and not a Title I school, we've developed different levels of resources across those 13 buildings. And so in some places, the grade-level libraries are not what they need to be. Our expectation is that kids are going to be chomping through books and they're going to have lots of choice. Those books will be diverse, they'll be at different levels. And they'll be, you know, they'll be, they'd be enough to support the programs that we have. And so we are desperate for these library books. And so, you know, last year, that kind of got set aside with the budget, that can't happen this year. We really need to push forward to get these books. We've also had a lot of books that we've sent home to students during the pandemic to give kids books to read, physical books to read that we know will not come back. So, so in addition to having a low supply of texts in many of the schools, we will have lost even more because of, because of COVID. So we're hoping to, to shore that up. That in that curricular resources, there is also a large ask, 165,000-ish or so, something called decodable texts. And if you remember last year, we, we, we implemented a new phonics program at K-5, so there's a lot of resources around phonics and intervention. And so we're going to continue to round out those resources and intervention, get more intervention kits in the hands of teachers in the classroom, not just with the interventionists, so that our teachers can start to deliver some of these targeted supports and fill in some of the gaps that may have occurred this year. The decodable texts support the phonics program in that we're providing students with texts across K-1 and 2 that are kind of, that are progressive. And so they're, they're called controlled texts or decodable texts, some people call them. Either way, and so it allows students to practice very explicitly a phonetic sequence, have skill with a phonetic sequence that had, they've been exposed to rather than haphazard, haphazardly encountering these in the texts that are on the, the books, the shelves in the, in the classroom. So very important for structured phonics, very important to improve our students' ability to read by third grade, which is our ultimate goal. Okay. And hardware, software, there's, these are, a lot of these are just, now, now that we have made the shift, there are document cameras and all kinds of things that will go along with utilizing digital instruction in the classroom a little bit more. So that incorporates some of that. The digital tech, tech book is a digital resource for the science curriculum. K-5, so last year we did, the year prior, we did grade three. We held off this year on rolling up grades four. But this year, moving into 2021, 20, 2020, 2021, we have, we have to do grade four and five. So the discovery textbook is, is a quote for digital, digital software to support that curriculum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to ask Courtney, if you can, on the slides, if it's possible to identify somehow with an asterisk or some sort of a footnote, what are these, of the dollar amounts indicated, if you can indicate what's restorative and what's basically compliance? The other thing in the curriculum resource over here, we have $941,000. I think we should indicate maybe in brackets or separate line numbers as to how much we plan for the library and how much we plan for the text. It's a big number that's just a, you know, a global number. And I think we are, we're obligated to at least specify, we're in a little bit more detail on what we're looking to spend it on.
Sure, yeah, of course. Yeah, because even if you break up, it's 500,000, Karen mentioned for the library. But even then, it's 441 is, is, is a lot. Yeah, sure, sure.
No, to, to complement the numbers. Okay. I know Augusto's not here, but I recall this conversation the other day and Dr. Sal filled in. And Courtney, you had went through the, 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 uh, make not the hardware type of situation, if you want to do that or again.
Oh, sure, yeah, the hardware. Oh, yeah.
Augusto has joined us, just so you.
Oh, yes. Should we go to the English learner section and the ESL?
Yeah, exactly. If he wouldn't mind just stressing the importance of this and, and again, pretty much reiterating.
Did he hear you, Augusto?
He is here, yes. Yep. You're on, you're on mute, Augusto.
I, I'm here, I'm here.
Did you hear Mr. Genali's question?
Can, can you repeat, please?
Sure. Augusto, what I'd like you to do is again, pretty much repeat the conversation of, of the other, the other day. It support the actual needs and why you feel we might have $1,000 in your program and the benefit that it gives to the district and the problems that you have now, because you don't have some of this stuff.
Sure. Sure. So as I, as I had the, the opportunity to share with you the last, the last time, in, in a, in a brief description of the, what's driving the, the request for ESL bilingual, I would, I would start by saying that it's definitely Connecticut bilingual law and initially identification requirements. If you remember, I mentioned that every school in Danbury is, is required, has been required for a few years now by state law to offer bilingual education programs in Spanish and Portuguese in addition to providing the standard ESL services. And at the same time, we, we must follow the required home language survey guidelines that are in place for initial identification. Another component that contributes to the request is what I would call a realistic teacher to English learner student ratio. We are targeting 1 to 65. Again, as I, as I explained before, other school districts comparable to our size, Norwalk being one of them, New Haven another one, they, they target much lower teacher to English learner student ratios around 1 to 50. So we are still being very conservative. But again, if this is approved, we believe that we are moving in the right direction. We are implementing a new English language development program, ELD program called L-Achieve. And this initiative is aligned to the, the department's theory of action, which is based on what I call a blueprint for serving English learners throughout the school day. It's a, it's a two, a two-way approach. On one side, we provide what we call systematic ELD instruction, ESL instruction. This is a dedicated time that provides explicit language instruction organized by level of English proficiency. And at the same time, we look at what we call language instruction for content learning. In our case, we, you know that by PSYOP, which is explicit instruction to support English learners in understanding and using language necessary for good level work. And this is done in the regular education class. So the need to sustain a strong PSYOP coaching component, this is definitely important. The, the, the PSYOP coaches play a crucial and essential role by providing stability, consistency to the initiatives from the ESL department. Their encouragement and support definitely are being very useful and help teachers develop and maintain fidelity of implementation and fidelity to the model throughout the school year. I, I would like to refresh your memories again to what I mentioned the last time, which is we are not requesting new positions. The requested PSYOP coach, coaches and the assessment data English learner L specialists are not new. We, we are just restoring what we had before. If you remember, we used to have three PSYOP coaches at the middle school, one for each school. Two positions were eliminated during difficult times in terms of, because of budget, budgetary constraints. And we are currently down to one. One coach for the three middle schools. And, and the restored L specialist will make sure that the district follows all the steps that we must follow in order to comply with federal law, ensuring that students in need of English language services are appropriately identified and offer those services. So I, I would say, for example, at the high school, which is not even a part of this budget request, but we used to have two coaches without two one. So again, I think it's important to reiterate the fact that we're not asking for new coaching positions. These are positions that are being restored. The other FTEs have to do primarily with legal compliance from Connecticut bilingual law and also trying to come to a, a student to teacher ratio of 65 to one. And again, that's shy from what other districts are currently targeting. But it's much better than what we had two, three years ago in, particularly at the elementary level where we had schools that, that had one to 100 and over 100 students. So that's basically where we are and why we are asking for these additional FTEs and positions.
You know, the, the board, I know you're listening and you're hearing these numbers. So you keep saying to me, what happens when we don't get the money? Well, this is what happens. You keep going, going, going. Then you get to the critical mass and you get to where we're going. So you got to keep trying to rebuild. And that's what we're doing. So when we start fighting for this budget and they, you know, bring us down to 2 and 3%, you could see how over time, you know, that critical mass just starts, it's a house of cards. We can't afford to do it because your bilingual kids, your ESL, they are our student population in more ways than one. So we got to be able to come up and, and shore up this department. Agusso's been working very hard at this and I do thank him for his diligence and doing what he's doing with the, with the staff that he has. So that's really important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Augusto. With Dr. Sal, your point, what I'm trying to get at here is these numbers, as you said, are, are critical. If we don't get them, have serious consequences. And the more that the board understands, we could do more community outreach and explaining what the impact here or the, the impact, let me stay with that word. Or the, this document supports our formal budget. Then to a reader, if we have commentaries on here, they can go through and see what the, the effect and what the need is for the numbers, not just seeing, you know, one PSYOP coach or two PSYOP coaches, $150,000. We've got to, to make more of an inroad so that there is a, a complete understanding as to the need of what we're asking for and, and then as to the consequence if we don't, if we don't get it. And that's why I'm asking each of the individuals that are, I call it responsible for the areas to make the presentation because I would hope, and as I spoke with Courtney, we can have narratives so that anybody who gets this presentation can read it, you know? I, I would like that when you present it to the common council, they have our binder in addition to this, and they understand, you know, the, the backup to this rather than just looking at numbers and then us going through and making a presentation. I'm hoping that has more of an effect than what we've historically done. And with, with that being said, I'll ask Courtney to leave ahead with her thing.
Oh, sure. Yeah. And, and Dr. Sal took your suggestion too, and we started to reach out to build sort of video vignette since we're still in a virtual world. So whether it's invited guests to talk specifically about their experience, for example, the PSYOP coaches or the investment in decodable, you know, workbooks and things like that. Dr. Sal's already started to reach out to individuals to get that video. So. Yeah, my piece is really straightforward. Oops, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to make you dizzy. I apologize. Okay, here. Yeah, it's, it's the bus that I mentioned, you know, we need a bus. I think everybody knows how crowded our buses are, especially during COVID times. So I put in for a bus. Again, the administrative offices, minor amount of furniture and supplies, you know, we never, we don't usually add that when we add enrollment growth. So we are doing that now because, you know, we saw Kevin and I really specifically how bad the furniture was in some of the buildings when we had to go in and, and distance the desks with, with the rulers and sit in them ourselves. We, you know, we're going to have to do a recycle, replace, refresh, refresh. We do reach out to other districts when they give up their goods and, and Sal's always getting rich to get a truck to go to some other district to pick up some nice equipment that they're getting rid of. But we do want to put in a ask to buy some additional furniture for those kindergarten classrooms. And then I, I mentioned the network maintenance. I, I, I can't stress enough how critical that is, not just to the office functioning because, you know, we need to pay people. We need to have our network up to be able to run reports and do the things we need to do. But critically, because we need the infrastructure or support for our classrooms where they're more technologically advanced now and we have Wi-Fi, we have Chromebooks, we have software that we're using. And so in order to really utilize that investment, I think Gina's put together a really prudent ask with a partner to do up, just basically not even upgrade our network, but bring us to the 21st century with our network. And so, yeah, that's, that's the operations piece of the block being that network maintenance. And the contract's actually expiring, so we do have to do something.
At some, at some point, I think after we get funding, what we had talked about, and I think it was mentioned during the course of conversation about putting together a three-year budget, because I think that, a multi-year budget. But I think that's very important considering the, the new academy coming down, down the pipe and what we're building now in order to support some of. some of the elements that have to go into the, to the new academy, whether it be curriculum or whether it be staffing, et cetera. And I'm sure over the next year or two, we're gonna be implementing more of those, those costs or those factors. Do any of the board members have any other questions to the cabinet or to Courtney on, on the budget?
Thanks, Rich. This is just a general question. I'm not sure who can best answer it. But obviously we got a laundry list of items from Niasq about, you know, different things that need to be improved. And I'm just wondering if this budget covers all of the necessary improvements or if there's anything that hasn't been, you know, considered in this.
You know what? It was hard for me to hear that. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Let me try that again. Is that any better?
Now it is. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm just, I, I know we got like a, a list from Niasq about things that had, had to be addressed. And I'm just wondering if this budget covers all of those improvements.
Oh geez. No. I mean, there, Kate, when you put together a Niasq visit, there are many things that go into it that, that they recommend and it, and it's hard to achieve all of them. But the essence of what we're doing, you have a large high school of, you know, thirty-three, thirty-four hundred. And they, they spoke about the, the need for more hands, more time for classroom visits. I think some of the things that we've done here with the dean, some of the things with the behavior climate people will help. Probably the biggest one would be the council ratio that they would, they would endorse in terms of adding more. And that's, I think Kelly probably could speak better to that one than I can. But that, that's something that would, they would feel that would be important. Kelly or Kara, any other comments about the Niasq itself would be helpful for, for the board to hear?
I was just gonna comment on the counselor piece and then Carol certainly turned it over to you because I know there's other curricular elements. For the counselors, I think it's important to understand that they're recommending that we get to the ratio of two hundred and fifty students. So this budget attempts to move the needle a little bit closer to where we need to be. But at the end of next year, we will not be there. So I think it's important to keep in line that we're, you know, adding on things in the appropriate direction. But it, it doesn't fully eliminate the needs in the report. The other piece that they certainly cited in, in the report, particular to my area, was also the nursing support services. So an additional nurse at the high school will remedy that need. There, there are some infrastructure needs as far as expanding the health services office. That is not fully spelled out in this budget, but that's something, you know, Courtney and I have spoken at length about along with Kathy and Cabinet to look at some other funding sources to do that. So those are just a few things that I can speak to.
The, the area of the, the, we had to work on in terms of the specials and Carrie, you can do that.
Sure. Yeah. You know, I think it, I think this is a start. I think this is a minimum. I think we can't go backwards from here. You know, it's, it's hard to continue year over year over year to ask for the same things and not get them. And as we continue to grow, you know, what happens with staffing and supports and leadership, you know, you stretch it to the max and you move from high quality to just compliance driven, right? So what do we need to do to just, you know, meet the basic minimum requirements? And that's not where we wanna be. We, you know, we've spent a lot of time in portrait of the graduate, you know, talking about what we want in teaching and learning to look like in Danbury, what we want our students to, what those outcomes are gonna look like and the type of students we're gonna produce. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna make serious moves in this area, we need to be able to rely on a budget that continues to support that. And, you know, we, we, we have a lot of plans. This academy, you know, again, it's not just a building. There's a vision behind this. And we could do something really great, but if we don't start digging out of this hole and start to make incremental growth in these areas to support the growth that our school system has experienced, we're not gonna be able to, to realize those, those dreams for our kids. So, you know, establishing a budget cycle for curriculum has been very difficult over the last ten years. It has been randomized because of the budget. So we don't get X, Y, Z. Okay. Here's an extra ten thousand dollars that left over from a credit in June. And what do you wanna spend it on? You know, so it's your just, which child do you feed? Do you feed the special areas? Do you feed the social studies, the ELD intervention? And, and it's, it's been difficult. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, to Kelly's point, you know, with the, with the counselors, we have to get going, right? We can't, we, you know, we're, we've reached a critical point now where we'll start to fall behind. We have tremendous staff. We have amazing teachers. But we push everything to the brink because we're always on the edge. And, and we need to start working on, you know, deepening the work that we're doing. We have to start building the budget to a place where we can rely on it year to year. So we, so we have a sense of our programming going forward that's sustainable.
And Kate, just in, in addition to the curriculum upgrades, and I'm, I'm channeling my, 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 my Dan, Dan Donovan right now because they were, we were also cited for insufficient science labs at the school. And I think there are some other issues that are being resolved as a result of, of the pandemic. But, you know, there, there were official complaints about uneven heating, ventilation, plumbing and bathroom issues. I think the ventilation and heating may have improved a little bit during the pandemic in terms of the services and, and our concerns about ventilation. They were also concerned into Courtney's points about upgrades needed for furniture, et cetera. There were, you know, we were also cited for insufficient funding overall for instructional supplies to deliver, deliver instruction. But, you know, they also said that we had outdated in corrosive and toxic chemicals in our science areas and throughout our facility, insufficient technology and support for staff and technology, which again, I think, I'd like to think that's been satisfied now as a result of the pandemic. And so in, in ADA, ADA compliance for elevators, furniture and fixtures. So, you know, there, there's still some other work to be done outside of what's been presented in this budget. And this is just specific to the, you know, to the Niasq complaints. You know, this is outside of all the other things we're presenting just to keep, just to keep the ship moving forward.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate that feedback. And I, and I think it kind of highlights some of the concerns that, that, you know, I've heard expressed and that I share, which is that, you know, the budgets that we're putting forward, although they will certainly help move us in the direction we need to be moving, they're just not, even what we're asking for is not going to meet the needs that we have in our community. So, thank you guys.
The, some of the stuff too, Kate, is in the maintenance budget and from the city, you know, which, which blindly comes in. But I think you're, would be accurate to say, the answer to your question directly, no, it doesn't meet all the expectations in the ask. And it's gonna take some time to get a lot of those things done.
Thanks, Dr. Sal.
I have a question or several. I, I really wanna support the budget. I wanna be an advocate for, you know, all of these items. You know, my two kids are in the school system. I have an incoming freshman, you know, next year. I, I understand the need for counselors and especially assistant principals. I'm, I'm so appreciative of these workshops and hearing, you know, the more you hear about, you know, the, this, what are they called now? Student behavior specialists? You know, it, it makes sense, but with the numbers changing, it makes me very uncomfortable. Even from the documents that we received last week, you know, just to point out like the six, four, nine, four in the, you know, the breakdown, the categorized breakdown doesn't match, you know, to the, to the detail. It, it's a six, four, eight, four, you know, so. And then for the numbers, the, the bottom line numbers to change, you know, just when I was feeling like, okay, I got it, I re-watched our last workshop in, you know, slow motion and like took the time with, like printed out the, you know, your presentations. It's just, it's frustrating and we have not had a lot of time to really digest. So, you know, I don't, I can see where you re-categorize things. And I see a, you know, a few things where things were changed, like with the bus. You know, in the operations, I can see where some things changed there. But it just, you know, it's not really.
Would it help Rachel if we give just a side-by-side with what changed? So for example, we asked for six teachers in the elementary school, but when we really looked at it, we only needed three plus the three specials. That was one change. The bus was a second change. And there was a ten thousand dollar change to the, to the interventionist because I had miscategorized them and I, I missed ten thousand dollars. So as we went through, you know, iterations of the budget, we kind of refined them as we continued to talk, talks that we would have normally have had, you know, a month ago. But there, I can assure you that it's, it's minor and I can even tonight get you that, that same detailed doc I sent as a draft on Friday. I can send that tonight that ties out to the whole budget doc, to the whole presentation tonight. So it's in the same format and I can just explain those changes. We also had something called humanities and it was my misunderstanding. It really didn't belong in its own category. And so really it was part of just to simplify things, to consolidate. We moved up the humanities and special areas into the curricular subtotal. So net-net, the new needs went from six point four to six point one, mainly because of those adjustments, we lost three teachers. We said we didn't need them when we really thought through it and more carefully. You know, we really had to consider a lot of things like the, the climate, you know, of the city, the new ten point one million dollars that we got and what, what, what we have in terms of enrollment projections for next year. So, you know, ideally that would have been done two weeks ago and you would have had the materials well in advance. But those are the changes. Really nothing more substantive than that. And I understand your concern about not seeing a solid document. My hope was to get you that detail, knowing that we were still workshopping, you know, a few of the items. So I do apologize.
And also, you know, since we, we are expecting, you know, ten point one million and for, through the CARES and Essar, you know, are some of these items in there knowing, you know, expecting, you know, that to cover those items?
You know, I would, I would have to say that these are the true needs. These are the true operational needs if we didn't have any other funding, right? The fact that we braided funding this year was just, I think I would say an act of desperation and, and need to do so. But I, these, these funds are not intended to supply operations. That's not the intention and that's not the, that's not the hope because you would build the really big, big cliff in your budget if you did that.
Right. It's not sustainable to budget that way. And so in some of this, is it building toward the new career academy?
Well, somewhat, and I think you need a three-year budget to really lay that out. Some of this, some of this base work will assist it. Rachel, we got very, we're very fortunate to, to get some, some other funding that has been able to guide us through the, this process with advisors. But soon for staffing and others will, will be for future budgets. This budget does not much. I'll let Kara, who's worked intimately, I don't think there's really a lot there. Is there Kara?
No, there's some, there's a little bit of money in there for training for staff, right? So we need to start to build the capacity in-house to do this work. Additionally, you know, we're bringing in consultants. And actually, we've used a little bit of grant money that we've had dedicated towards this to bring in consultants who worked with the Nashville academies to guide us in some of the process. And we're engaging in that now. And I could speak to that a little bit more tomorrow night when we talk about kind of the update. But, you know, with the opening of the, of the building being twenty twenty-four, you know, it changed things a little bit. We thought it'd be a little bit sooner. So I think we would have put some, some more in there. So for example, we, you know, we will, we will likely purchase a course at the end of next year to start to work with and to train students, teachers on and our administrators around this college and career exploration. Net, I think you're gonna see a lot more in the budget next year in terms of deeper levels of training. Right now you have, you know, kind of core, core folks, myself, Dan Donovan, Meg Martin, Sarah Roy, Melissa Nadeau, who are really kind of around the table with some of these consultants. And that's kind of what we're spending a little bit of money on right now. But, you know, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that, you know, if we don't create the staircase that leads to this new building opening up and this new vision, I don't know how we're gonna make that leap when, when that building opens up. I don't know how we're going to resource it, staff it, fund it. So, you know, we, we have to, like, the counselors, counselors will be an integral role in helping, helping with this process. You know, our, our assistant principals at the high school now be, you know, probably each taking an academy and becoming leaders of a specific academy and really, really driving a lot of the thematic approach that's gonna happen in those areas. And we need hands on deck to make this happen. This is gonna be a game changer for Danbury. It's gonna be very exciting. But we have to shore up our core programs that we have now to get there. We have to build science pathways and math, change, you know, and train teachers in, in conceptual mathematics across a K-12 continuum in order to be able to have students access the kind of learning that we're talking about by the time they exit our, our program. So we have to just, we really have to dig in and keep going and, and we can't take our, our foot off the gas now in this. We have to, we have to dig in.
And I know we're over time and I, I've, you know, I mentioned this to Courtney, but if there, if there's any plans for, you know, more permanent solutions through the CARES, Essar money, you know, like the, the science labs and things like that, but, you know, water refill stations instead of the fountains and automatic, you know, whatever is more permanent than temporary. And then all, just one last thing, the, the, the proposed, I'm sorry, the school budget history, I don't think the last few years are correct in the percentage increases.
Okay.
I think la, I thought last year.
Came to two point five somehow into number.
All right, because, yeah. So the one point two was not considered part of the appropriation, the one, two, seven, three. It was a mid-year, it was, it was, it was a mid-year add. So when you do the budget, you do it based on the actual appropriation at the start of the year that the council votes on. And that enrollment add, they didn't consider it part of our budget. So the percentage increase would have to have been based on the prior, like the actual voted on approved council amount. The one, two, seven, three is considered just a special appropriation, but they did include it in the next year's budget amount. The, the consecutive, the following year's budget amount.
Okay. I was just looking at last year's by here. It was, you know, it looked off.
That's why there was a confusion last year of a nine million dollar increase versus an eleven million dollar increase. So whether we include the additional mid-year appropriation that we had.
Yeah, we've kind of changed the way we talked about it because we, we wanted to, like, not put forward to the city, the city that we, we really wanted them to give us both the one point two and our ask on top of that. Because if they didn't, then we would just be further behind because we already, you know, invested that, those funds in teachers and buses and things that we needed for the enrollment growth. Yeah.
And I, I think it's very important that we, again, focus on and dwell on the comments that Kara and Dr. Sal and throughout the conversation today, is that we've gotta continue to advocate that number one, we take care of the compliances. But number two is that we continue and start to support and build our foundation because of what's down the pipe. We can ill afford now to, to further go back and, and to create new, new concepts such as the academy and put that on the backs of, of our existing staff without the proper funding. It would just be an inappropriate foundation. And, and so it's very important that, that we understand this, convey this to, to, to others so that we can advocate as to why we need the money and what we're doing, what, and what's down the pipe. And I think the multi-year budget, once we get the appropriation, would show essentially our thoughts as to what the increases will be in the next couple of years to support, support the funding and for the reasons for it. So it's not a shock to anybody when they look at our budgets in the subsequent years and they could feel. and they could feel assured that we do do some proactive thinking and planning and just don't go year to year, you know, flying from the seat of our pants. So that we have some sort of strategic plan.
And Mr. Rich, I would add, we spoke about that and and looking at keeping it simple, focusing on the current year, but as we plan in the next month or two, when we advocate for the, within the community and present the budget to the city and have the feedback for what we're doing with the ten point one million CARES funding, as well as the next alliance increment, you know, that's gonna be an opportunity for us to really robustly build out a multi-year plan. Because there's, you know, a consider, different consideration for how we'll use the CARES funding, like you said, facility support and things like that, that, you know, there's a different consideration for how we'll be utilizing the alliance. And then depending on the city's response to our need, what we'll be doing with this operational budget. In addition, while we continue to develop the academy programming and all of the elements that are needed, building towards that. So we're looking towards that in the spring, being the multi-year, multi-fund, you know, roll up your sleeves and really kind of start doing that good work.
Are there any other board member questions? That being said, we are going to leave this meeting and in the same meeting, we're not going to come out and go in. I'm going to then have a finance committee meeting, which will be open just to the committee members. In that meeting, I'm going to ask for a vote that we recommend that to the full board that we adopt the superintendent's budget as presented. Other, is there any objections to that statement? Okay, that's great. Gives me the confidence that I can go ahead and and do it. With that being said, I thank everybody for their participation and input. For those that are part of the committee, which would be Kate, Al Russo, Catherine, Kathy and myself, we'll just take a few minutes to adopt the 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 motion and and then we're gonna adjourn for the evening. So if you want to stay for that, fine. If you don't, I won't be offended. So I'll see you all tomorrow night.
Rich, Kara sent out a second link for the finance committee meeting. Are we supposed to be moving into that second meeting?
She said we didn't have to, just to save time. We can just continue.
Okay.
It's it's just the, you know, it's just a statement, so there's no sense in logging in and logging out and stuff like that.
Just want to make sure it's clear for anybody who might be trying to track down the information from the video vault. Yeah, it's it's fine. It would, it's all being on the same link. Okay, fine. Yes. Great. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
All right, so what I'm gonna do at this point here, I'm at Kathy Malinero, would you be, just take the minutes for the meeting?
She give you a a thumbs up, Rich.
Okay, I haven't seen it. So at at seven fifty-five, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the finance meeting to order. And just to take attendance, Kate.
Present.
Al Russo.
Present.
Catherine.
Present.
Okay, and myself. And Kathy Malinero.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Can I entertain a motion for the acceptance of the budget to the full board?
Still moved.
All right, so what we'll do is for the motion be that we will recommend that the full board accept the superintendent's budget of a hundred and forty-nine million, ten dollars and six hundred and fifty-one dollars for a nine point eight two percent increase over the prior year to be adopted. Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll see you all tomorrow night and just summarize this stuff again. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Good night, guys.
Good night.